Okay, thank you very much for coming today. Thanks, committee. We're ready for the agenda. First one is apologies for answers.
Chair, we've had apologies from councillor Vaughan-Thomas and councillor Viv-Thomas. I understand councillor Price is running late and it may be the same from councillor Haynes as always. Waiting for him to come. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much for that. Decorations?
Chair, just want to point out to members, just in case it's not mine, that councillor Haynes has now joined the committee and she replaces councillor Champion. Thank you.
Thank you for that. Two decorations for your trust, councillor P.
Yes, I would presume the interest in item four because I work for St Martin's Housing Trust.
So you'll be leaving the chamber?
Yes.
Thank you. Councillor, items of three minutes, minutes on the last meeting. Do we agree to quick record everyone was here? Thank you, that's good. And we move on to the planning applications. The first one is item four. So I've asked my, would you be in the chamber, please?
Just to point out to everybody present, we are rehearing this item from the start. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Good morning, everybody. I'm going to take you through the first application on the agenda, which is on land at the garage site adjacent to nine to nine, it's a hundred and five, Netherwood Green. And the proposal is, as you can see on the screen, it's the development, so the demolition of the garages and the construction of a modular building containing four self-contained flats and associated landscaping. And that is the application site and members will recall that this application was reported to committee last month and was deferred due to two reasons, one of which was, yeah, there was a concern that access to the bin store...
Can I ask, well, if you can start again, that would give councillor Hayes the option to join any questions who was sitting there all day and up and down.
Very sorry.
That's okay, no problem. If you could start right from the beginning again, if the first part's still up. Thank you.
Yeah, so the application is on Netherwood Green and it's a council garage site currently. And the proposal is to demolish the garages in their entirety and construct a modular building with four self-contained one-bedroom flats and associated landscaping. The application is by St Martin's Housing Trust and the intention is that the units would be occupied by people in vulnerable situations, including homeless people. I understand they would be typically occupied for usually between six and 12 months, although I imagine that could vary. Because it is a longer term occupancy, we are treating this as sort of planning use class C3, which is residential dwellings, the same as any other residential dwelling. So this is the application site and as you can see, the garage block is in the middle of the plan here and the red line shows this application site boundary. You've got the properties on Netherwood Green itself that back on to the application site. They're two-storey houses and then you've also got more two-storey houses on Arnold Miller Road, which also back on to the application site. There's also Martin New Cottage, which is a detached dwelling, sits within a large garden and Martin New Lane is in this location here and it leads down to County Hall. The site is not within a conservation area. So this is the site plan as was previously reported to planning committee last month. And as I mentioned earlier, this application was deferred at the last committee meeting because members had concerns about how workable the bin store would be and problems to do with potential for vehicles to obstruct access to the bin store, which is an understandable point. And there was also concern because there are two mature sycamore trees located here, which are to be retained. There was concern about overshadowing to the first floor flats in particular. And members asked for considerations to be given to provide additional natural light to that property. So in the last few weeks, I've been liaising with the applicant to seek to overcome those issues. So this shows the new site plan. So you've got the building located in this location. What we've done, what we've agreed is that the bin store would now be brought up to the roadway in this location, the parking spaces would be removed. This does create a larger garden area, which benefits, more area for planting. This area would be protected by the installation of bollards situated here. The reason they're situated there is because this land is all part of the highway. And the intention is that double yellow lines will be repainted in this location to protect this, effectively there's a cul-de-sac and stop any vehicles parking in front of the bollards. So the bin crews will be able to walk through this area, take the bins out of the bin store, take them up through this area, through the bollards and empty the bins and there won't be any obstruction. The applicant has confirmed that they don't require any onsite parking. And in this part of the city, which is, it's got good public transport links and is quite close to the city centre, there's not a requirement in planning policy terms for onsite parking. So we're happy with that from a planning point of view. I've also consulted the county council highway officer on this layout and he is satisfied with this. There will be a condition to deal with all the finer details of the exact position of the bollards and the repainting of the double yellow lines and any off-site highway works that are required to facilitate this and to make sure it does work. So that deals with the bin storage access and we're satisfied with that. The other point was the provision of natural light to the first floor flats. So I'll just show the design of the building as well. So you can see it's a flat roof, two-storey modular building that would be clad in sort of a chalk colour render and have an alternative sort of cladding material as well to provide some variety. The applicant has chosen not to have windows on these end elevations on the first floor because there is neighbouring properties that are in close proximity. And when they consulted neighbours, you know, neighbours were quite keen that there wasn't any loss of privacy and so on. And so that's why the applicant has chosen not to provide windows on the first floor. So for that reason, the applicant has set state of preference for having the sun tunnels, which I think one of the members did suggest at the last meeting, it could be a solution. So the sun tunnels would be situated above the living room for the first floor flat, one in that position and one in that position approximately. So that would serve this room here for this flat. We've got a large window in that location. The sun tunnels would be situated approximately there and there, so two serving the living room. We did look at the option of having one for the bedroom as well, but it was considered that you don't necessarily want light streaming in in the summer months in the early hours of the morning. And light, natural light isn't as important in a bedroom as it is in a living room. So in summary, we're satisfied as officers that that does guarantee that there would be adequate natural light into that building. It does improve things over the previous situation. That is just a plan of recycle stores and bin stores. And I will take you through photographs of the site, particularly for any members that weren't here at the previous meeting. So that is a view looking in an easterly direction. You've got the two mature trees that I've mentioned in that location. You've got the two garage blocks that would be removed and the building would be located just behind these trees. And you can just make out Martin New Cottage on the far side there. That's a view looking north. That is, the new building would be approximately in this situation, in this position here, although probably slightly further across than the line of the garages. But you can get an idea of the size of the mature trees. There would be sun pruned to those trees to facilitate the development and the tree officer has confirmed he's happy with that. And that's looking in the opposite direction, so that from the south west and you can see the existing houses on Arnold Miller Road. That is a view of Martin New Cottage. And then that's a view of the garden of Martin New Cottage. And members will note that there are some mature planting already along this boundary, which helps to provide some screening and helps to ensure that, that together with the distance between Martin New Cottage and the new development, helps to ensure that that would be an acceptable relationship. I think the distance between Martin New Cottage and the proposed flats is approximately 21 metres, which is acceptable to us. And that is a further view looking towards Martin New Cottage. And that's an aerial photograph of the site. And the reason I've included that is because we have received some additional correspondence from the occupier of Martin New Cottage. They object to the addition of the bollards, which they say would obstruct their right of way to their property. They're also concerned that it would cause an obstruction to longstanding public rights of way and a concern about the ability of emergency vehicles to access the site. Okay, so this is Martin New Cottage, as I said, this is the site. At the moment, there is no vehicle access to Martin New Cottage. The access is through this pathway and there's a gate actually approximately there. So there will be no change to that situation, there's no change to this pathway. That will still remain. So we don't agree that it would obstruct their ability to access their property. The other thing to say is that the bollards will be designed, that they can be operated by the emergency services. So it wouldn't, you know, if the emergency vehicle needs to get down, they will still be able to. And that is a common arrangement throughout the city where those bollards are used. So we're satisfied that that wouldn't be a problem. Rights of way, that isn't a planning matter. If there are any legal rights of way, that would be for the neighbour to sort out with the landowner. But we've not been made aware of any legal rights of way that exists over this land. So yeah, in conclusion, we don't consider that the installation of bollards will materially change the situation for the occupier of Martin New Cottage. And if I go back to the site plan, it would actually allow an emergency vehicle to get closer to Martin New Cottage than the current situation because we've kind of got a garage block in this location. We've also received another comment from a different resident, which raised concerns about the possibility of increased crime and antisocial behaviour as part of this application. That issue is summarised and dealt with within the committee report. But in summary, we have to treat this as any other application of the house. We cannot judge the application on the basis of who may be occupying it. We have to strictly deal with the planning use that's being proposed and this planning use is acceptable in this location. So all of the other issues are also summarised within the planning committee report. We're not going to take any questions on those. But in conclusion, we're satisfied that these measures that the applicant has taken will address the concerns that members raised at the last meeting. So the application is therefore recommended for approval, subject to completion of a legal agreement to deal with through treaty and charity and green infrastructure. And so that concludes my presentation.
Thank you, Robert. Oh, I didn't want to put the hands up, we've got speakers on this one, so they'll come first. But I will say, don't forget members, we've got an update, so please read your updates. Yeah, we did, yeah. It's probably Rick's okay? Yes, and you have those three minutes.
Sorry, I forgot to put that, just lift the microphone. It's probably better if you sit and kind of bring the mic. Sorry, I forgot to put it on.
Now you're supposed to. Can you hear me? Oh, yes.
Sorry about that.
Are you ready?
Yep.
Thank you very much for letting me speak because I'm sorry I couldn't attend the last meeting. And apologies if I go over points that you may have already thought agreed. As you know, Martin Cottage is our house, which is a historic gatehouse built in 1889. It was actually a gatehouse for when County Hall, site of County Hall was a mansion and that was the gatehouse. So although it's not, I don't think, regardless of heritage property, it probably should be. Anyway, just just background, my three main objections are, I think the design does not satisfy the criteria of the local plan. Second one was about the windows. I thought that architecture should be dealt with in the same way as the other houses are regarding to overlooking, the pretty similar distances involved. And the third one was the restricted access due to the bollards, which we have, or sorry, Norfolk County Council have rights of way over our property for plant and machinery to get through the property because the south wall is what supports Martin New Lane. So it's quite crucial that they can maintain it and live there. Just going back to my first point of the design, I think DM3 wrote the plan, talks about a design to blend in with the area and enhance the character of the neighbourhood. All around this area are houses, two-storey houses, brick or different things in our case, with pitched roofs. This is, as the planning manager said, a modular square. I actually liken it to a building site art and I think it doesn't fit in in the area. I'm not against housing in there, I think there should be and I'm all for that. I just think perhaps the design could be looked at in terms of making it more softer in the local car, but blends in better. I think especially if the back wall of the garage is removed, you'll see that in the foreground with historic cottage in the background, it may look very incongruous. I have spoken with the applicant and they are minded, I'm wrong, but perhaps the boundary wall, which is the back wall of the line of garages beside the cottage, could remain. And just with the first garage knocked down completely and the back wall of the others may... I'll explain about the first cottage, first as a garage, but we may have it knocked down completely. Because in our deeds, you mentioned this earlier, Norfolk County Council got this right of way. And I don't want to be, we would be, I've been advised by a lawyer that we could potentially be sued for if I didn't aid, try and stop the bollards being there. But if Norfolk County Council, as you say, I don't know if they're, what type of bollards they're going to be, but if they are acceptable. And I would like to point out that although in the report at store they said that you're allowed to stop the bollards, they don't, they go right down to the garages at the bottom. Just thinking I said most of these things.
You've had your three minutes.
I have, sorry, thank you very much.
I've just went for you to one of them.
Yeah, so just in summary, it's a design which are not satisfying the local plan, DM3. And I think the windows, it's a smaller issue, but no one likes being overlooked and I think it's a similar distance to the other houses on all sides and allowing access and the back wall will remain. Thank you.
Thank you. We have got one of the speakers and the first one is Dan.
Good morning. St Martin's are grateful to the planning committee for approving our application for the eight-bed site in Netherwood Green. I have just a few comments in relation to today's application for the four-bed site at Netherwood Green. I know you had some concerns about the location of bin storied and the natural light and I hope that the revised plans give you some comfort that those issues have been addressed. Just to remind the planning committee of some of the key points I presented last month. Four years to the day we are applying for change of views for building a corner road or somewhere safe to stay half. Many of you will recall that we had a lot of opposition to this project. However, this hub is now a critical part of the city's infrastructure and a project that has helped Norwich to buck the national trend of rustling. Last month I also present was pleased to advise the planning committee that despite all the opposition to our somewhere safe to stay half, the project has supported 505 people on their recovery journey, been able to get people off the streets quicker, worked with the local community, held regular meetings and if there have been issues of concern, these have been addressed very quickly. We had three complaints this year from the local community about incidents of antisocial behaviour outside of the hub. However, I can confirm that nobody living in the hub has been charged with drug dealing, no arrests outside the hub have been made for drug dealing. Our team members and the people we support have worked hard to keep the local area clean and tidy, doing regular litter picks and supporting garden projects. I do understand why people feel the need to object to having our projects in their area. People are naturally worried about change and fear of the unknown. We do have some antisocial behaviour, some of the people we support have poor mental health, but we have processes and procedures in place to deal with it quickly. We also work closely with the police when we need to or when we are asked to. As we have seen with our previous change of views planning application for the somewhere safe to stay half, it is not until our projects are operational that local people can see how hard we work to be the best neighbour that we can be and what difference our projects make to the life of the city. Last month I advised the planning committee that nationally there is a housing crisis. Earlier this year, the housing communities and local government select committee advised that 90,000 new social homes are needed to be built every year for the next 10 years. Nothing's changed, we do still have that housing crisis. Finally, I'd like to remind the planning committee that people sleeping rough are 17 times more likely to suffer violence or abuse than you are I. The average life expectancy of a man on the street is 47, for women it's 43. Last year, 1,313 people died on the streets. That's an 85% increase on the numbers recorded just three years earlier in 2019. If planning permission is granted for the new units at Netherwood Green, this will go some small way to helping to provide more social housing for people when they need it the most. Quite simply, this project saves lives. Thank you.
Thank you. That is you, the speaker. We move on to questions from members. Oh, I'll probably do that, you asked the planning officer if he'd like to... Just tell the planning officer to come back and only query if there were questions asked.
Yeah, I think it would be worth just commenting on some of the points that were raised by a gentleman. Yeah, in terms of design, it is accepted that it is a different form of building to that which is currently on Netherwood Green and also Arnold Miller Road. However, it's a, it's a small scale development. The inclusion of a flat roof helps to kind of keep it low profile. It's being built at a time which is much later than the other buildings surrounding it. So whether it's the right approach to try and mimic the design of the existing properties is sort of debatable or whether you say, no, this is a new development and it's going to have its own identity. You know, it's, I think, these will be more sophisticated than a site of this or something, you know, a quarter cabin. These are quite modern, advanced installations these days, these modular buildings and the type of cladding that can be used on them does make them look like a normal building in effect. And then they can, and there's a variety of different treatments that can be used to help integrate it within the surroundings. So yes, we would agree that it's not strictly in keeping with the existing characteristics of the area, but at the same time, it's quite a small scale, low profile development that we think does work in this context. I think it's also worth bearing in mind that, you know, the existing buildings are very shallow pitched garages that are not particularly, you know, nice to look at. So in some ways, there's probably a bit of improvement to actually the appearance of the area, particularly when you take into account the additional planting and breeding of the site that will take place. Also mentioned was the boundary wall. We will make sure that the boundary treatments are agreed as part of the landscaping condition. We'll make sure that adequate privacy is provided from the sites and that an adequate boundary treatment is agreed with the applicant by condition. The other point about access of the Norfolk County Council to Martin New Cottage. Ultimately, that's a legal matter between the landowners. And I assume that that would have to, if it's currently one that exists across the land, across the garage site, then it would have to be agreed. Norfolk County Council and the new landowner may well have to sort of come to an agreement about that, but that isn't a planning matter for us to consider at this meeting. So that's how I would respond to those points.
Any questions to the committee officer, councillor Susan?
Thank you, Chair. I just want to have a little question about, you know, the light that you're going to put in. I have experienced them in the past and my concern is that they do in summer, particularly with a flat roof, throw a lot of heat into a potentially small room. Is there provision for a reflective blind to go across in the hot weather? Because otherwise you might find people, and I have seen this in the past as well, putting clothes, getting on the roof, putting clothing in there to stop the heat coming in in summer. We do get hot summers sometimes.
Yeah, I did have a feeling that question might get asked, so I did have a look at this this morning. The information I found admittedly on the internet was that sun tunnels, although they would bring some additional heat into a building, it's pretty small because of the way they work. Because, yeah, you have a kind of dome on the roof that catches the rays of the sun, but then that goes down into the tunnel and diffuses the light because a lot of the heat is lost on that journey down the tunnel. So the information I got is that they don't generally cause significant... So the information I got is that they don't generally cause significant heat gain to a room. Certainly nothing like you would get from a Velox roof light or something like that, which are common on many properties. So we haven't agreed the exact design of these with the applicant. I think that's something that they should take into account. It is a good point, yeah, it is a good point that they, it would be a guide for them to consider when the designer is.
Councillor Levitt.
Yes, my question is about the design. I don't know if this, you discussed this before, but it is about the energy efficiency of this type of modular building and the benefits of, hopefully of that over, benefits of cost as well as energy efficiency and the speed at which it could be erected. Are they sort of factors over a more traditional build?
Yeah, I believe, you know, the method of construction for these is much quicker. So there's a lower cost to the environment in some ways through, because the construction process is shorter. And these will be built to modern building regulations and still have all the normal standards of insulation and all that kind of thing that you'd expect from a normal property. There aren't any specific renewable energy measures being proposed here, but we can't require them to do that under the local plan policy whereby, because it's such a small number of units. But yeah, they will be built to building regs standards. And in some ways, they're a lower impact form of building, I would say.
Yes, thank you for that. And I'm all in favour of the low cost and the quickness of it. But I, I don't feel that, I know we have to work to the standards that we had. But I'm not hearing that they go beyond the standards. I mean, you can actually get.
That's all the statement.
Why can't we have modular buildings that actually exceed the standard? So they're almost sort of passive house? That's the question. I mean, everything is about the insulation, everything that comes after that is, you know, once you've got the insulation right, you know, everything else will be right because you won't be losing heat. And I would just like to feel that these are modular buildings that actually have a really good insulation above the standard.
Yeah, I can only, as planning officer, I can only ask the applicant to provide something that's set out in our local plan policies that they must achieve or. There is no standard other than building regulations for smaller developments under 10 dwellings. But the developments of 10 dwellings or more, as you probably know, yeah, we have higher requirements. But unfortunately can't require that in this instance.
Councillor Calvert.
Thank you, Chair. Do you have a diagram of the highway extent? But we talk about highways issues, I'm a little uncertain as to where the highway extends.
I have seen a diagram, I don't have it on this presentation, you may well have just been handed off. But it, I think essentially it just tends to.
I'm afraid that's not allowed. Because no one else has got a copy of, even thinking it. No, you're not allowed to, I'm afraid.
Well, perhaps if the officer, that's it.
Well, if the officer's just got put it, put it away.
Apologies, but we do need to make sure that all members have the same information, so thank you for that.
In this case, I wish to declare that I looked it up on the Norfolk County Council, I looked at their website, but it's not very specific.
I know, I know what you're saying.
I also do remind members, I know you've got your computer open, but perhaps we just make sure. If, if you've looked it up though, I'd be someone that would.
If he waits on line, well, can you look up on their website?
Probably could, yeah. I'll just explain it using the pointer. I'll explain it using the pointer and then if you do need any more detail, let me know. But essentially the highway comes down here and stops about there. So that's all designated public highway, maintainable by Norfolk County Council. The highway stops there effectively and continues all the way out there. So the rest of the land is owned by the city council and is not public highway. There's also, as has been pointed out, there is a third, this pathway is also designated as public highway, but not roadway in that location, but this pathway where it meets the gate to Martinelli Cottage is public highway. But there would be no change to that pathway through this development and so therefore that will remain as is.
I would point out, sorry, my department, government manager, for those who don't know me. As Rob has said, the county council have been consulted on this particular application as far as its impact upon the adopted highway and existing highway rights across the land. They have no objection to the proposal.
Councillor O'Shea.
Sorry, Chair, if I may.
Oh, I thought you finished it, so.
Sorry, can I just come back on a point that councillor Dobbett made about the energy efficiency? Thank you. Whilst we can't insist on anything over and above the standards in the local plans, Rob has pointed out, I understand that actually these units will be designed to passive house standards. Thank you.
Councillor O'Shea.
Thank you, I've got a question about the bollards. And I think they were brought up last time in response to, in the situation where there were still two parking spaces in front of the building. And I think the idea behind that was to stop people parking where they aren't, weren't supposed to park there. Now, the parking spaces have gone and I just wonder whether the bollards are still needed because I don't really see why anybody would drive in there. They can't really turn there, they can't do, really do anything else to really need the bollards, because there's not a double yellow lines.
I think the reason for the bollards is that we know there's reasonably high parking pressure on this estate. Even though you could paint double yellow lines, well, it's two things. As we've explained, it's not public highway all the way down that roadway. So any double yellow lines painted on that road would not be enforceable as part of the public highway. Yeah, the other, the other thing is, the idea is, I think that there is the potential that people could park there and cause an obstruction, which was the reason for the bill at the last meeting, I believe. So watching to concerns on that. So bollards just provide a way for people to still be able to get through, but to just to deter, basically stop vehicles from parking and obstructing the bean store, responding to the concerns that were raised at the last meeting. Though, you know, we've looked at different options for this and, you know, I agree that it's a slightly unusual layout, but it is one that bollards are used in similar situations in the city. And we think that we're satisfied that this is workable and as David said, we've, I've talked about this extensively with the county council highway officer who is satisfied with this, so.
Councillor O'Donnell.
Thank you, Chair. As far as the, just back of the plot goes, back to Martinelli Cottage, I thought the arborist would be able to suggest the best forward screening. I mean, my immediate impulse is probably poplar trees or something, which are very decorative and can also provide screening. But again, back to the, to the bollards. This may not strictly be a planning thing, but are there likely to be, when they are occupied, a need for, say, some carers to provide some, you know, short term care? They're going in, helping administer medication or other sorts of things for people who are likely to live there? Which means as carers, you know, flip all over the city and obviously use private cars because of necessity of their job, you know, they may need somewhere to pass. I was thinking moving the bollards up slightly to provide that access also. As the tendency tends to be, short term, like be for a few months, up to a year, there may be people who have payers going to the properties as well. So it seems sensible to me to just move the bollards a little bit to allow for a provision of temporary occupation of vehicles along there. Also, the fact that bollards are rising, bollards means they can go down. And if the Norfolk County Council needs to access the south wall of the garden of Martinelli Cottage, she'll have access to that anyway.
Okay, there's a few things to come back on there. First of all, I'd go back to the point that the bollards are in that position because that's the highway boundary effectively. And if you move the bollards back, you end up with a bit of a no man's land where we could end up with this parking obstruction, which we've talked about. The applicant hasn't, has said that they don't require dedicated parking. They will be making visits to these properties for both to support the residents, but also to do maintenance and things like that. My understanding is they have parking permits that they can use in controlled parking zones. So which, and Netherwood Green is part of the controlled parking zone, so they're generally okay to park, I think.
Yeah.
Chair, so.
Yeah, sure.
Just in response to that, we, as you say, we do have colleagues who go into the property for the barge, for reasons. But because of the proximity of the two sites at Netherwood Green, we're confident that people can walk the short distance from one to the other.
Thank you. I think it's also feasible that St Martin's will be able to operate these bollards, so they could potentially lower them and then park behind them. So, you know, that, I would have thought that's entirely possible. So they may well actually have a dedicated parking area if they wish to. So, yeah, I think this is probably the right place for bollards. Answer to my question, thank you.
Okay, if there are no more questions, I'll move the recommendation, the recommendation is to approve, so I'll stick up for it. Thank you, Dave, but you're not allowed it. Thank you, Mike. Any discussion? Councillor Calvert.
I have to say, I was somewhat confused by the positioning. The concern was the lack of light in the bedroom, as I call it. And so we, it seems like this application looks to rectify the lack of light by the lack of a window in the upstairs bedroom compared to downstairs, compared to the decorations we saw last time. It seems to rectify the lack of natural light in the bedroom by putting more light in the living room. And I'm rather concerned that that hasn't met our concerns from last time.
The building's actually moved back a fork as well, I think. Is that right? Yes?
Yeah, I think that my understanding of the discussion at the last meeting was a concern about natural light generally to that flat. And it wasn't restricted to the bedroom, although the bedroom is probably part of it. Just for the avoidance of doubt, this is the flat that we're talking about. So it does have a window facing north, although that would be somewhat northwest, but that would be somewhat overshadowed by the trees. Yeah, as I said, we, in discussion with the applicant, we agreed that it was best to provide natural, increased natural light to the living room where people were spending the majority of their time during the day. We looked at the possibility of adding sun tunnels to the bedroom, but, you know, there's not an easy way of closing light in sun tunnels. And therefore, on balance, we decided it's best not to have them and, because natural light isn't as important in a bedroom. So there will still be a window to the bedroom. That was the thing we settled on in the end, but yeah.
Tony?
This is kind of linked to the reason, if my premise are on. Councillor Susang has kind of asked a question about the light tubes, sun tubes. And I think Rob suggested that we might kind of have a condition to secure details of that. I don't think we have a condition at the moment that does that, do we?
Yeah, I think we haven't agreed the precise.
No, so therefore if members did want us to secure the precise details of the sun tubes, then that could be done by condition.
Okay, any more discussion anyone? Councillor O'Donnell.
The only comment I'd make is I'm certain that it has been called by designers as sun tubes before. I'm certain they could incorporate some sort of little blind system inside. I'm certain that's been addressed before by the designers of these, so it won't be a problem ultimately.
Councillor Hannah, did you forget your name, a councillor, so.
Hannah, thank you. I'd just like to say I'm really pleased to see that we want some garden space. And it's great that when there is not particularly much for parking space in that, they're not created. So I'm really pleased to see this provision.
Okay, if everyone's finished, we'll move to the recommendations to approve.
Chair, just before we go, did you want to move that condition? Is that necessary?
No.
No, thank you.
All those in favour of the recommendation, please show. Let's you know.
Members, councillor Price, not being there.
Thank you, it's approved, thank you. We move on now to item two. And councillor Piquet, come, there's something out the door. Is that the speaker? We move on now to item.
Five, I believe he was standing in the last. Councillor P, did he just mention that?
No, he came back.
He's been here to talk about.
No.
He was here before.
Oh, yeah, of course he was here.
Yeah, thank you. Okay, we're on to item five now, which is the application, Othor. And if I am allowed to take this further report, please, thank you.
Thank you, Chair. Okay, so the application for us is for the change of use of a retail unit within the Othor District Centre and some minor external changes associated with that change of use. So let me describe the site to begin with. So the site itself is on, is this end unit within the wider district centre. To the rear of the property, there is the large car park which serves that district centre. And surrounding this courtyard are a number of retail uses and other takeaways and a pub on this corner here. There are some residential properties further afield. The closest ones to the site are in the top corner of this site plan. In terms of the unit itself, it's laid out like this. It's got a main entrance which is accessed along the row of retail properties. In its existing form, it is primarily an opening space with some office and toilet spaces to the rear. The proposal is for a change of use to a hot food takeaway. And associated with that change of use. And associated with that change of use, there would be a customer area to the front, some kitchen spaces and various sort of store rooms, fridges etcetera to the rear. The external changes, which I'll show you on the elevations in a second, are the installation of a couple of vents on the rear and a couple of compressor units and air conditioning units on the side. These are the existing elevations. And these are the proposed elevations. So you can see on the rear, this is the rear which faces the car park, there are two vents installed in these locations. And on the side, elevation here, which is not easily visible but also fronts car park, there are two plant equipment potentially to be installed on the side there. So some photos of the existing site. So this is a view of the unit in question with a row of retail units stretching out in the distance there. This is the rear of the site, so this is the rear elevation on which there would be two vents installed. And this is the side elevation in which there would be a compressor unit and an air conditioning unit installed. This is the front elevation, as you can see the site's vacant at present, this layout wouldn't change. This is the large car park to the rear. And this is a view facing into the district centre with the unit here on the left and various other retail and other uses around this space. So in terms of the assessment of the proposal, we've got a, we've got to consider firstly the principle of the development, so whether this change of use is acceptable in this location. And in order to do that, we need to do two things. We need to think about the loss of the existing retail use and then the creation of a hot food takeaway in this location. In terms of the loss of the existing use, as I said, this is in a designated district centre. Our local plan policy DM twenty-one talks about protecting retail uses in these centres with the aim of enabling them to continue to function successfully as a place that people want to visit, businesses can thrive there and they're in, you know, accessible, sustainable locations that are appropriate for retail uses. The DM twenty-one talks about maintaining a certain threshold of retail uses in district centres, and that threshold is sixty per cent in order to protect its function. The change of use that we're talking about here would take that threshold just below sixty per cent. So it's notable that that is a policy conflict. However, this particular unit has been vacant for a very long time, a number of years. We can see that it's been advertised for retail and other similar uses without any success. And the other point to make is that the recent changes to the use class order have meant that retail uses are not as protected as they used to be in general. So DM twenty-one was adopted at a point in time when we would need to consider the change of use from retail to all sorts of other uses, restaurants, offices etcetera, would all need an application. However, now that class E has been introduced, which includes retail uses, there are many other uses that sit within that use class, offices, restaurants, estate agents, all of those sorts of things, which people would be able to change the use within all of those uses without any need for planning consent. So we don't necessarily have the same control over protection of retail uses as we used to. For those two reasons, we've concluded as officers that it is acceptable in this case to bring this vacant use back into some sort of functioning use, to bring some employment back to the centre. And it would operate at a time of day where people might visit this and visit some other uses in the centre. So it would serve some sort of function that helps the centre to continue to thrive. So there is a policy conflict, but we've weighed that against the benefits of the scheme and recommended approval. In terms of the creation of a hot food takeaway, we've got DM twenty-four which talks about the creation of hot food takeaways and managing the impacts of that, environmental impacts and impact on amenity of neighbours and also highway impacts and making sure that these units are situated in accessible places, there aren't going to cause issues on the highway network. We're satisfied in both respects that this unit would be able to function quite well. So, and then the only other issue worth talking about is the design impacts of the very minor changes to installing vents and plant equipment and in this location on the rear of a retail premises in a car park essentially, those design impacts are considered acceptable. The recommendation therefore is to approve the application, subject to a number of conditions, including the opening hours being limited to eleven to eleven each day and also the maintenance of the equipment to be in accordance with the details which we've seen and have been reviewed by our environmental protection team.
Thank you very much. We have got a couple of speakers on this, and the first one is the applicant, Mr Tulliver.
So I'm not the applicant, he's the speaker.
He's the speaker, thank you.
An interested participant.
And you have three minutes.
Thank you very much, respected planning committee members. Number seven, Bothall Shopping Centre has applied for the planning permission. And maybe you don't know that my takeaway shop is right opposite to this one. So if they will be allowed and if they will be permitted, then that means I will lose my bread and butter. As the Minus is a big chain, so there's no, we can't compete with them and we don't have a match. So long story short, I will request the authorities not to allow them because I will lose my bread and butter. Also, if the authorities will allow them, then I will, then the authorities should advise the applicant that they can contact me and they can buy my business rather than coming to a new shop. So this will save the planning committee time for giving the permission and doing the other stuff and... Because I will not be able to afford the staff and other expenses if they will be allowed, so... And these days, you know, everybody is having a very hard time financially, so I will request the authorities not to allow them. If they do, then please advise them to come and contact me so I can sell them my one because after that I will not be able to run my business. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr Tulliver. Thank you for that. The applicant, the applicant here, and you have three minutes as well, thank you.
Good morning, my name is Tom Kilvert from Pegasus Group. This application has been, we worked practically and positively in a manner with the council throughout this process and responded to a result that he concerns raised during the application process. As confirmed in the officer's report, although the application does marginally exceed the third threshold for long term retail uses as set out in policy DM twenty-one, the principle of development is deemed to be acceptable. This is because the relative policy is outdated in relation to use class order and that the benefits of bringing vacant units back into use outweigh the relative requirements of this policy. Norfolk County Council has not objected to the proposal and stated the site has adequate vehicle access to pedestrians, bikes and buses. The existing car park at Bothall Centre provides sufficient public parking to serve the proposed use. It also facilitates the unit's previous use as a class E news agent. This provides a potential fallback position in which units could operate under a variety of other uses such as a cafe or restaurant, which would generate similar levels of vehicle movement in the existing car park without the need for planning permission. The food safety team also raised no objections in relation to the principle of introducing a hot food takeaway in this location nor its potential to produce harmful odours which could distract from the local community. This is also spotted in the officer's report. Abatement measures include installation of a rear extract duct to treat and disperse odours released from the unit to an acceptable level. Also, by virtue, pizza takeaways produce much lower odour emissions as they exclusively use oven baking. Therefore, harmful odours will be minimised to an acceptable level, not impacting the residential amenity. It has also been suggested the proposal distracts from the wider character of the centre. However, the appearance of the extract duct and a new shop front will be discreet, minimising the changes to the overall appearance of the local centre. The change of use will also provide an active frontage in the vacant unit, encouraging footfall and expanding the centre's evening economy, which will improve the vitality and vibrancy of the local centre, as also agreed in the officer's report. As also confirmed in the officer's report, concern raised about increased business competition, as also raised again this morning, are not material planning considerations and therefore were not considered in assessment of this application. It is therefore respectfully requested that you follow the officer's recommendation for approval for this change of use scheme. Thank you very much.
Thank you for that. And answer to what came out on the other problems.
Yeah, just one point as set out there, that competition between businesses is not a material planning consideration and we're not here to prevent competition between businesses. So we must direct our decision away from that.
Thank you. Is there any questions to the officer? Councillor Tulliver.
How do opening times compare to other opening time conditions in the area?
I believe they're very similar and eleven o'clock is quite a normal time for a takeaway use in a district centre to operate, especially when there are no nearby neighbours that might be affected by that.
Councillor Prinsley.
Thank you very much. To be honest, I'm a bit depressed that a post office is being turned into a pizza takeaway in our Bothall Shopping Centre. Are there any planning regulations relating to the health of the population? Because we've got an obesity crisis and if we've got yet more fast food takeaways and yet fewer fresh food outlets, this is a, only increases the problems that we're stacking up for ourselves.
I appreciate that point, but we don't have any policies in Norwich that relate to fast food takeaways, the location of them, the number of them. We don't have any specific policies related to health in that respect.
Councillor O'Donnell?
Thanks. Although competition between businesses is not a material consideration, I note that point twenty-four on page forty, we do talk about employment opportunities as part of the considerations we can make. Is there any consideration made into potential loss of employment opportunities as well caused by applications or is it simply just we assume that anything currently in situ or remaining in situ and make an assumption that things will always be increasing as opposed to the reality, which is probably that things will flex when new businesses come into an area?
In the same regard as that we can't consider the competition between businesses, we can't assume that this business is going to put any other business out of business, so we wouldn't be able to take that into account there.
Okay, the recommendation is to approve, I'll move that over to second now, thank you, councillor Sands, like. Any discussion on this? Councillors Moatsands and then councillor Su-Sands.
I take the points that councillor Prinsley made very, very seriously. Certainly when the post office first closed, we campaigned to sort of have it remain open, but sadly, I mean, there's a whole bunch of different circumstances there. But I also take on board the comments made about obesity and all these sorts of things. But one of the things experience has shown me is, you know, I've got a degree in geography and urban geography and other sorts of things, is that when you have similar businesses, they tend to attract a lot of footfall. So we've got a nice little development here where there's a bakery, there are two existing food, cooked food outlets plus this, and I've a mind to think that it's going to attract more custom, more customers to the centre. And certainly we've got a high student population, it's going to attract more of them to use this centre. And certainly someone might go along and say, oh, I come along to buy pizza, I even buy pizza, I don't fancy that, I'm going to go in and buy myself a kebab or a Chinese takeaway or whatever. So it provides variation. And although we talk about competition as if competition is a bad thing, what we do have is variation. Variation allows people to go along and make up their minds about what their purchases are going to be. So I think ultimately it's going to add to the vibrancy of this centre, which has had a number of closed shops for quite a number of years. So ultimately, I think it will be a good thing for the other gentleman as well. I don't think, he may find a short term downturn in his business, but I'm certain that he'll find he'll attract more business himself as well.
Councillor Su-Sands?
He pretty much said it all. I just wanted to say that when you have any community centre such as the one in Bothall that you see just diminishing and dying over the years and the units becoming empty, it's really quite soul destroying. And I feel that, oh yes, okay, I agree, we lost our post office and our news agent, which was, you know, awful, but I think that we need to have the centre living again, we need to have people in there, we need to fill out the units in Bothall Centre. And I think this is one way of doing it, it's all I have to say.
Okay, thank you for that. There's no other comments, we will take to the bill. All in favour of the recommendation, which is to approve, please show.
Councillor recorded votes, I'll call out names. Councillor Driver, councillor Prinsley, Susans, Mike Sands, Calvert, Haynes, Peak, Young. Any other name pan out?
All those again, please show. It's Dan, stations.
Councillors Hertner and Price.
Councillor Lommet, did you rule in favour?
Yes, sorry, I didn't call your name.
Yeah. No problem, thank you very much. It's been approved, thank you. I'm not sure if we've got the speakers here for the next.
We did have.
Have we got the applicant here? Well, yeah. Yeah. Wow, yeah. Thank you for that. We will move on now to item six, which is One Fernhill Norwich. Now, I'll allow the other panel to detect for who you call. Thank you.
So this is the application, or the information on external, sorry, installation of external insulation and replacement render, which is set for number one Fernhill. This application was called in by Counselor Echidman. So here's the location plan of the property, which is the entrance of the cul-de-sac of Fernhill, which is just off Cotman Road here. And so which is off Thorpe Road, just north of the train station. The property is one half of four same detached properties on Fernhill. The property is located within the Thorpe Bridge Conservation Area and the history of the site is mentioned in detail within the area appraisal. The site was originally the location of the Fernhill Estate here, and which was built by the influential Ivy Bugcrates in eighteen sixty-five. The rental up here is the location of the property. So the land was disposed of in nineteen thirty and a builder called Southgate built the properties on Fernhill, which are now numbers one to eight. The design of the properties was influenced by the Interwar Art Deco and Modernist movement with flat roofs and coarse rendered finish. So the proposal seeks consent for the installation of external insulation and replacement render. This is the current condition of the property. The property has installed the external insulation and have re-rendered now in smooth finish. Here is a photo of the property before the works were completed with the coarse rendering matching number two. Here is a photo of the rear of the property again before the works were completed, showing the coarse rendered finish. This is the property as it is today with the smooth render. I'll just show you a close-up of number one on the right hand side here and number two on the left showing differences in the finishing of the render. So for the context of the rest of the street, this is number two, which is attached to the property. This is number three behind the street on the right and number four on the left, still with the original coarse render. This is number five on the right hand side and number six on the left again with their coarse render. And finally, number seven on the right hand side and number eight on the left again with this coarse render. Number one is the first property you see when you enter the cul-de-sac and is visible from the rear on Cotman Road. Here is the rear from Cotman Road, so number one is now on the left and number two on the right, showing the distinct differences in this new finish. The use of the smooth render is considered to impact the property as a non-designated heritage asset, which causes harms to its inhabitants and group values of numbers one to eight and consequently fails to either preserve or enhance the character of the Thorpe Bridge Conservation Area. The coarse render is one of the only remaining features that creates a cohesive appearance to these properties. The smooth render has broken this cohesive look with the properties and sets an unwelcome precedent for the others to follow. There have been seven letters representation, five supporting and two objecting. The supporting comments are mainly about the appearance of the property stating that it is visually appealing and now enhances the entrance of Fernhill. Others have stated that there is no consistency in the physical appearance of the properties and that the colour is appropriate. There is improved standard performance and has improved the living conditions. The objecting comments state that there was a consistent coarse rendered finish for the other properties. This proposal sets a precedent for the other householders to modify their properties. It is out of context in the conservation area and creates a negative impact. The insulation has changed the architectural style of the property with altering the window details and no longer fitting flash wipers, adjoining over. And the property now looks like a new build on an estate and is completely at old with the other properties. Just to let you know that there's been an update in the report detailing of Counselor Echidman's and recommendations to bring the application to this committee. So to summarise, the recommendation is to refuse the application based on the reasons detailed in the report, given that there are alternative, less damaging options for insulating the property. The benefits of the insulation are not considered to outweigh the harm caused to the property and the character of the conservation area in assessment of the harm against them. Thank you.
Great, thank you very much. There we have got one speaker here today, Sarah Easton, Elston, sorry about that. And you're no free, but I will wave her a bit there and there, thank you.
Thank you. I read, I've got to say though, there is nothing to stop you from approving this planning application because the independent heritage impact assessment submitted with our application is clear that the change in appearance to One Fernhill has caused no harm to the Thorpe Bridge Conservation Area. There are also other good reasons why four hundred and two approve it. We have shown in our submitted planning statement that the changes we have made are supported by various local and national planning policies, including those which support measures to ensure a future resilience of communities and infrastructure to climate change impacts. We have provided you with these two documents to help you in your decision making, yet neither of these documents are referred to in any way in the report you have in front of you. It's as if they don't exist. We feel the committee report is not balanced, it's also misleading and at times incorrect. It's misleading because it exaggerates the changes we've made, it's also misleading because it uses language to exaggerate heritage value of houses in Fernhill. It's incorrect because it refers to One Fernhill as a non-designated heritage asset. The house is not locally listed, nor would it score highly enough against the criteria in appendix seven of the Development Management Policies Plan, where it to become locally listed. Just because our house is in a conservation area doesn't give it this special status that the report alludes to in a number of different ways and places, including in the conclusion of the report. The use of language is muddled and misleading. If you refuse our application and accept the recommendations of the committee report, you will be rejecting the conclusion of the independent heritage impact assessment that no harm has been done. You'll be asking us to reverse the improvements to the house and remove the current insulated render to Fernhill. Even if you feel some harm has been done, you can approve our application by deciding that the benefits of the improvements we have made outweigh any harm, as allowed by paragraph two hundred and two of the National Planning Policy Framework. We believed in twenty twenty that it was time to upgrade our nineteen thirty single brick house and make it fit for the current environment. The same insulating rendering improvements have always been made to similar houses in the same conservation area on Telegraph Lane East, as pointed out in our application. The changes we have made have benefited our tenants by reducing their heating bills and ensuring a comfortable living space for years to come. There is no Article Four direction to prevent us from changing the colour and we have been sensitive to the surroundings in our choice of textured render and a colour which is not dissimilar in tone to others in the room, as can be seen in the pictures on page sixty-one. The neighbours opposite to One Fernhill all agree that the new look is visually appealing and may support the improvements we have made. We therefore hope that you will approve our application.
Thank you very much for that. Counselor Price?
Thank you, just to come in that way, as I would count, I have been contacted by the applicants initially when, when, when the issue around this application came forward. I am not predetermined in any way, I informed the residents, the applicants that I am on planning and referred them to my other board colleagues, but I wanted to have that on record.
Okay, no problem. Questions, Counselor Haynes?
Because I also received that email, but again, I'm not predetermined.
Okay, go on.
Can we just come back on a couple of points made by the speaker?
Yes, you can.
I just want to come back on a point about the report being misleading. I don't agree with that assessment. Specific reference was made to language being used to exaggerate the importance of the property. That's, that's not the case and I think the, specifically whether or not the property is a non-designated heritage asset, the inference from the speaker being that it was just not locally listed, it's therefore not a non-designated heritage asset. That is to misunderstand what a non-designated heritage asset actually is. Locally listed buildings can be non-designated heritage assets, they don't carry any formal statutory protection, but other buildings in a conservation area which are not covered by the local listing can also be non-designated heritage assets. And that is the conclusion that we as officers have reached in the committee report. So it is accurate to state and we've said why we think it is a non-designated heritage asset and I believe it is correct to say that it is a non-designated heritage asset. However, having said that, this speaker is correct, with less than substantial harm, it is therefore open to members to weigh up the harm caused against the benefits and we have mentioned the benefits of the insulation to the property owners individually and also to the wider community of that benefit. Our weighing up of that benefit is that it is not outweighed by the harm and we've set out why and the reason being that we believe that there are other less harmful ways of achieving the same benefit. Members are entitled to come to a different conclusion, but that is, the report is not misleading in coming to the conclusion that it has.
Thank you. Any questions for the other officer? Counselor Prinsley?
Can I just ask a question about the process here? This is a situation in which something, we've been asked to approve or disapprove of some building change which has already happened.
That's correct, yes.
So if we were to disapprove this change which has already happened, would it be the case that the property owner would be obliged to remove the, or, or restore the original appearance of the building prior to the modification?
Ultimately, that is what we would work towards achieving, yes. Initially, as we did when this breach first came to our attention, we kind of discussed way forward with the homeowners, they ultimately decided to submit the application because they, as they've said in their statements, they obviously believe that the benefits of the scheme, it should be approved, so they wanted to test it through the process. So they wanted to test it through the process. It's before we, with that recommendation, sorry, with a recommendation to refuse. If you go with that recommendation to refuse, then we will continue to work with the homeowners to achieve a solution that was acceptable to us through negotiation initially, but we would have to ultimately, if we were not able to resolve the issues, we may have to use formal notices to achieve. Well, just to point out that it's not an offence to do something retrospectively without planning permission, at least as far as this property is concerned. It's a different listed building, but it's not a listed building, so I won't go there. But the planning act specifically allow the planning consent to be sought retrospectively.
Thank you. I've got a question about the alternative options that are listed in the document. How the same insulation effect could be achieved? And I just wonder about the costs and obviously now this would be done retrospectively, but if the homeowners had considered one of these other options at the same, beforehand, would they have been more costly, would they have been, you know, would they have been prohibitively costly? Just curious to understand whether the other options would have been really viable.
I think the short answer to that is that we haven't costed them. Ultimately, we shouldn't be looking at the costs of doing things. And whilst, which is a brief review, we need to kind of investigate. The normal process would be to negotiate a solution so that if you submitted an application, and this from an officer's point of view, it might be something that's slightly more costly than we wanted to do, but you'd have an acceptable solution from a planning point of view. So the costs of doing something are not something that should be material when you're coming to making a decision on whether or not to grant consent. What you should be doing in this instance is you should be looking at this as though it hadn't happened and it was a proposal in front of you for something that, so that the fact that it's happened shouldn't bear on you. So you shouldn't penalise the homeowner because they've done it without consent, but nor should you effectively let them off because reverting it to something more acceptable might be costly.
My question wasn't here, my question was if the homeowners had chosen one of the other options for doing any work, would they have been similarly affordable, would they have been a lot more expensive?
And the short answer was I don't know.
Councilor Calvert? Have you not let any more override?
Thank you, Chair. Had an application been made which was insulated render, but had been a coarse insulated render and had been of a colour consistent with the rest of the street, would that have been acceptable, do you think? Appreciate it, that's quite a bit hypothetical.
We have no issue. The principles of insulating the property is acceptable and this is mainly down to the finish of the render. So if it was a coarse render with a similar colouring to the rest of the street, it would have been a more acceptable proposal. That answers your question.
Councilor Priestley?
Thank you, Chair. The applicant made reference to this kind of render being exhibited in other areas of the conservation zone. As Ward Council, I can confirm that said render is used in Telegraph Lane East. I'm wondering to be minded why it's significant when we have similar properties along that stretch, although not semi-detached, but a similar look in the conservation zone that this planning committee has been minded to not have that as a reason to refuse when those applications must have happened. So just confirming the understanding of render used of this type in the rest of the conservation zone, I don't think that sets precedents to say that it would be acceptable in that area. So I seek officers' views on that. Second point is looking at the pictures, there's a number of different doorways. Some have taken out the exterior alcove. This particular property in historical terms has a, what I would refer to as a wacky big, you know, extension on the back. So there is a number of existing alterations to the properties. There is a myriad of different types of windows. So I'm asking the officer to justify that it is outside of acceptability when so many features of these properties are already not used at all. Thank you.
Can I take the first point on that? About precedent, I mean, that was brought to our attention when the matter was raised with the homeowners, they did, it's in their supporting statement. I think the fact is that some of those who have rendered their properties have done so without consent. So, long story short, we'll be contacting them about what they've done. So we shouldn't take that as justification. We shouldn't take unauthorised works in a conservation area as justification for another set of unauthorised works in a conservation area.
Just to come back on that, I was unaware that they were unauthorised works.
Appreciate it, Chair.
I take your point that the windows and doors are now unlisted within this group of buildings, but the render is the last piece of these properties that makes them a cohesive group, that gives them a group value together, isn't that appearance? Of them being built at the same time by the same builder. It's just now changing it is now pulling that one building away from the rest of them and altering their character and appearance, which is, to our belief, is what makes them significant.
If I can just add to that, that these are not listed buildings. They do have certain limited development rights within conservation areas to do things like put the extension on. Some of them, so those part fall outside planning control. But as Holly says, I think it's, from our point of view, render is an option to be done and it is one of the things that gives this group of... First of all, a pair of semi-detached properties and then the group of semi-detached properties. It makes a transport part of the conservation area.
Thank you. Can I just ask a question? Are you the council aware of this happening?
I'll say that way. A member of the public, a member of the public reported it, so this application has come through in force of investigation.
Thank you very much. Councilor Haynes, and then Councilor Lovick. Oh, and Councilor Sands, helping up there.
Yeah, a couple of questions. I appreciate that basically the applicant sent us a post-it long report, but it's possible that you guys can still answer them where the applicant isn't allowed to speak again. And first I mentioned an independent heritage assessment. I don't think that's come up before in my various times at the planning committee. So is that something the planning committee councillors would normally be allowed to see? I'm aware that in other situations we have been allowed, for example, infinite noise assessors, responses, like for example, what plan application, I assume we would, and councillors have given that information. It seems to me like that would be a similar situation where we could be allowed to see the pending report, have we?
Chair. Yes, sorry. Can I come back on that? These were the supporting documents submitted for the application, so it's available on public access for members to view if they choose it in the same way. The supporting documentation for all the applications is available. We just don't agree with the assessment of the independent heritage, of the, sorry. We just don't agree with the heritage impact assessment submitted by the applicant, some say.
My other question was if we believe that these are significant heritage assets and that the render is a significant part of that, is there a reason we haven't gone for locally listing on these assets before?
You don't need to do that because it's, actually locally listing them doesn't give them any additional protection over and above a property that's not locally listed. It doesn't mean that you can't do certain things to them. It's a little bit of a throwback and since the NPPF introduced the idea of non-designated heritage assets, it's slightly macro-nistic, as I say. Anything can be a non-designated heritage asset if it has heritage value. It doesn't have to be designated as a locally listed building. That process was gone through in Norwich quite some time ago. It doesn't pick up absolutely everything that is worthy of protection as a non-designated heritage asset. So it's confusing, I'll admit that. But under the current NPPF regime, which talks about designated and non-designated heritage assets, designated heritage asset is everything that's got a designated heritage card, a grade two, two star and one listed building. Non-designated heritage asset can be anything else. So the fact that these aren't a locally listed building doesn't decrease their value. I hope that answers the question.
Okay, look, Councilor Sands?
Thank you, Chair. Just, could I just have a look at the other houses for a moment? That one on the right is white, I take it not blue, it's got just my eyesight. So they're all that colour everywhere else through that area. There's none painted or rendered a different colour.
So, yeah, they're sort of white or an off-white colour. An upper white background, more towards yellow tones.
Okay. Probably just my eyesight, the other one looked blue to me. The other question I've got is, is the more modern coating, is that more effective insulation, would you say? Or don't you have that information? It's just that if we say that they can only have the old-fashioned style of coating, then we're not really helping them have better insulation.
There are insulation options where you still have a coarse render applied to it.
Councilor Lovick?
Yes, thank you, Chair. Could I ask the conservation officer to continue to flick back through those photographs so that I have a better idea of what the buildings look like in their entirety and the different windows and the doors? Well, we've seen all eight having a, yes, that's fine, thank you.
Okay, the recommendation is to refuse, and I will move the recommendation to refuse. We're second to that, Councilor Sands, thank you. I would move on to comments, no comments, Councilor Sands, thank you.
Thank you, Chair. The changes to this building certainly improve the thermal performance of the building and this is something I think we should be encouraging. We've had instances in the past where we've had, actually councillor properties, I can remember a short row of council terraces come before planning because of changes, which were against planning standards approvals or whatever. We were recommended then to approve something which was actually detrimental to these homes in, and it seems to me to be a contradiction in terms. I can see little visual difference between the house before and the house after. In fact, if I treat photographs in my planning papers as I spot the difference, I can come up with ten differences. There's a car that's in one picture that's not in the other, there are some plants that have gone. The major difference I can see in the house is in the after picture, there's an open window. To be honest, I cannot see why we are being asked to refuse this application. I think the changes that have been made are an improvement. It's likely that sometime in the future other houses in the area will make similar changes to the external insulation. Okay, it's smooth rather than rough cast, oh, big deal. I mean, I think the homeowners have made some substantial improvements in the livability and thermal properties of the house and I certainly am minded to approve rather than disapprove this application. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Lovick.
Yes, well, rather like Councilor Sands, I mean, looking at them, there are so many differences and it is the windows, I think, and the treatment of the doorways that stand out more than the actual render itself. And the officer is saying it's the render that gives it the cohesion as a group of properties, but to my eye, it's really the difference in the windows that give it a lack of cohesion, as it were. So I don't think the render would make much difference in my eyes. And I think it's a small thing, really. And I would hate to put the owners through huge costs to take it off and do something to improve the visual aspect of it when I really don't see that it's impaired the visual aspects. There's lots of other things that already impair it and, you know, that they've been allowed. And if there are other properties that have also been allowed an award, you know, I think we have to move on and be less prescriptive about things, I think, and look for the good that's being done rather than the slight harm that may be perceived. So I'll be voting against the recommendation.
Councilor Priestley?
So I presume that the owners didn't do this rendering themselves. This must have been done by a contractor. And the contractor presumably must have been aware that planning permission was necessary to do such an alteration. I presume that the householders were not aware of this, otherwise they would have asked for planning permission. So that's why we're in this situation where we have to approve something retrospectively. I agree with Councilor Lovick that this is a very trivial change to the appearance of the property and some might regard it as an improvement. So I'm actually minded to support the household in this situation.
Actually, this is just a request to officers. If you're going to ask the planning committee to approve or disapprove something based on colour, could our papers be in colour? It's just a thought because...
Sorry, I'm going to interrupt here. You've got a PDF of it and we're asked to look at the PDF.
Yeah, I appreciate it.
We can't afford to look at it in colour.
Okay. Well, maybe then be directed to having a look at it in colour online. It's just that, you know, the questions that have come up about colour and when the other councillor said, well, there are different sides I can see, I thought, well, it's black and white, so I can't see the difference anyway. But my other thought is, of course, and I do appreciate where the officers are coming from on this in that it could be seen as a thin end of the wedge. So if we allow this to go ahead, what else are we going to then have to look at retrospectively? So I should be supporting the officers in this case.
Councilor Calvert?
First of all, I'd like to thank officers for supplying the report and thanking all the committee members who read the papers in advance. I think that's extremely important. I think we are somewhat unfortunate in how we are served these pictures. Having previously viewed the properties on street view, the difference in the render is much more apparent than the pictures we've been given here, which I think is a slight misfortune. On the application, we have, it seems as an authority, we get ourselves into a difficult situation because our level of planning enforcement capacity is so very low that we end up chasing ourselves and chasing applications that are ordered to us. Well, after the fact, then we come to the point where we are saying, oh, well, this one, this one and this one have been built like this. It turns out they haven't been either. Whereas if we're as an authority, both officers, no criticism of the other officers, we would be on top of this situation. And then as a result, this kind of thing would be much less likely to occur. In terms of the application, if the applicants had come to us and had not done any of the work and were dead set on doing a smooth render against the advice of officers, I can't see for one moment that we would entertain that. The only reason we're entertaining this, I think, as a committee is because they have done the work without seeking advice. I can't blame that. I can't blame that on the contractors. The homeowners are fully responsible for their own work. And so I think if we allow this to go ahead as it is or to remain as it is, then we set a precedent where we encourage developers and homeowners to undertake work and then put themselves on mercy of the committee time and time again. Saying, well, our contractor let us do it, we did it. And then hopefully councillors who will let us off. Insulating homes is an excellent idea and it should be done within the policies that we have for protecting the appearance of neighbours. So I'm minded not to give permission.
Go on, F S Peak?
To me, it's quite a hard decision. But what's made my mind up is when you look before when you're rendering, the two pictures, the front and the back. Looking at the front picture, just looking at it briefly, you can't see that they've got different windows, et cetera, nor the back. But when you see the rendering on the back, it really does stand out worse just because of that. It's completely different to all the others. So that's why I can't support this one.
I think a lot of people are getting confused here, what they're doing or what they're not doing. So be very careful. Recommendation is to refuse the work that's already been done. Councillor Young?
Thank you. We've been asked to consider this application as if no work had been done, which is really challenging to do. But as a council, we should be encouraging, if they'd come to us in the first place, we should be absolutely encouraging retrofitting, affordable retrofitting that allows people to live in comfortable, warm homes. I think what is really difficult in this case is that there is, we have no sense of the costings of different types of rendering. And I think if we were looking at this before the work had been done and we could see that having the textured rendering was going to be prohibitively costly, then I think, you know, as a council, we should be encouraging affordable retrofitting. We should allow homeowners to make their homes warm and comfortable with low energy uses. I think without having a sense of the costing of this textured rendering, it's really difficult. I guess I'm mindful to say the homeowners would have looked into this and then they chose what was the best affordable option. I hope that was the case. I mean, maybe they just went for the very cheapest. Is that wrong? If they end up with a house that's warm and with low energy use. I just think it's really difficult without knowing the costings and we've been told that we just haven't, we can't, we don't know that. Maybe we should defer this application and find out a bit more about the options that the owners had at the beginning and why they chose this particular type of rendering. Otherwise, how can we vote on it? Because I agree, we don't want to set a precedent that allows people to do ugly developments, but we also want to set a precedent that allows people to make affordable changes to their home. We are in a climate emergency and we need to be reducing our energy use.
Okay, even though I moved the recommendation to refuse, I'd be voting for to approve.
You've had to vote to refuse first.
Yeah, I know.
So you'd be very against refusal.
Yeah.
You can't, we don't default. Yeah. Can I just clarify to members about voting? The motion is to refuse, you'll be voting to refuse. If that fails, that means that the application is not automatically approved. You then have to vote to refuse. It's not either or, you're voting to refuse and then you need to vote again to approve. And if somebody wants to put their term of motion, please go to the vote call.
Oh, Chair, councillor Young.
I just thought I'd finish what I was saying about why I was going to do the other way. I think everyone else, everyone else is going to go, I might have a go myself. Yeah.
Councillor Young opposed postponing it, defer it. So I'll not second that motion.
Could I just ask that the officers respond?
Well, my advice to the committee is what I said before, is that the costs of doing something are not really material plan considerations. I kind of, I understand the point that's being made is that, I guess, the affordability of doing the works might weigh in your mind in terms of the benefits derived from it. But the cost of the work is, it's not being material to the consideration of the application.
I was going to say, I'll carry on, I'm going to move the other way.
Can I put number one, can I just talk about?
We'd be voting against the recommendation to refuse.
Sorry, at the moment, you've just had a motion to defer that's been seconded by councillor before an officer goes.
Can we just confirm, councillor Young, you have moved it to?
No. So can I carry on getting my way, then you do what you want, I'm ready to go. I'm going to talk about why I'd vote against the recommendation. That's it.
But then we've got a motion on the term of defer.
Okay, I wouldn't say anything. Have we got a motion on the term to defer or not?
No, it sounds like that we can't take costing into account.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I mean, you can carry on discussing.
Councillor, I don't want to say nothing. No, councillor. I'm sure.
Thank you. I'm struggling to understand, could we not argue that a house can only be insulated if it is affordable to insulate it? And because insulation can be taken into account, we often need to take into account the costs of that. Because I just want to know whether legally we would be allowed to have that information about the costs of these different options.
It would cost a lot more money to do it, for someone who's done it. I was a builder. And the difference is as well, I'd take three days' painting, we're this way, we're doing that day.
Sorry, if I can come back on that. The difficulty with trying to kind of work out whether something is affordable to one person is that you're really only working out whether it's affordable to that one person because of their circumstances. You then, you then kind of argue that, well, this is all that this household can afford to do in terms of an extension. And you accept something that's less than, that is not acceptable because it's not affordable. Sorry. You accept something that is otherwise unacceptable because it is affordable to that person. When you start bringing affordability into something, you really can start to get into individual circumstances and that's why generally speaking, you don't go there.
Councillor Sands?
Thank you, Chair. We're not going to defer this, we're going to vote on it today. Chair, would it be helpful to you, perhaps to other members, if I made a proposal that we retrospectively approve the external insulation and current render, rather than this situation where we...
Which is where I was getting to. I would take my recommendation back to refuse, to refuse, which would have been to approve what the planners said. So that's not on the floor anymore. And your note moved that we approved the records, backed what they'd done. Yes.
I'll second that.
Thank you, councillor Lovett. But is any discussion on that? All those?
Sorry, Chair, can I just understand the reasoning? And I'm assuming it's because you've weighed in the balance, the benefits of the insulation and the fact that they outweigh the harm.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Councillor Lovett?
Sorry, can I just, that's a side question. We had a motion to reject and that's fallen because you have withdrawn.
Yep.
And now we have a motion to approve.
Yep.
Which you're proposing.
No, I didn't. I was, councillor Haynes did, councillor Lovett, yeah. Seconded. Oh, councillor Haynes?
I think it's important, if we believe this, which I personally do, that we add into the reasons for approving this retrospectively. We don't think it does have a impact, a significant impact on the setting of listed buildings as a conservation area as a committee. But I think we think...
I don't think you can do that retrospectively. I don't think you can turn around and say it has no impact. You can argue that it has less, the harm that we've identified, you can say it's less than what we've actually set in your view. Or, and you can do a combination of these things, or you can say that the benefits of, you're attributing more weight than we've done as officers to the benefits of the insulation. So you can't say that it, I don't believe you could say that it has no harm on the heritage conservation area.
I'm happy with less harm. I just think it is worth having that in view. So I walked down that street, and very near, on the other, we're not talking about it, it's on the other side of that street, which isn't at all in line with numbers one to eight from Hill. And I think, pinpointing all of our thoughts on what these A properties look like, doesn't take into account the wider character of the area. So I think this has less harm than the officers are making out in the report. And I think it is worth reflecting that point in our recommendation. Thank you.
Councillor Prinsley?
I'm very pleased that we've altered the motion so we don't have to vote on a double negative, which is extremely confusing. So that's the first thing I wanted to say. Secondly, I think we should be less worried about the idea that this sets some sort of precedent. I don't think that we'll have large numbers of people going around rendering their houses without seeking planning permission if it is widely understood that rendering requires planning permission.
Chair, can I come back on that point? I think you do set a precedent for rendering in Fern Hill. And I think if you grant consent, the smooth render of this instance, it will be incredibly difficult to refuse it on the other properties in Fern Hill. It doesn't set a precedent for rendering in other parts of the conservation area. But I think it would set a precedent for rendering the properties in Fern Hill.
Okay, councillor Young?
I just want to quickly add as well that I'm aware that out of the letters that were received by neighbours, five supported the proposal. They're the people who live in the area, who appreciate the area, who want it to look good. Two objections, yes, but more have supported it. So I just think, you know, mindful of what Ash said, fully supporting that. She's very aware of the whole area. I don't live there though, so it's really comforting to see that, you know, people are happy.
Okay. We'll move to the recommendation. The recommendation is to approve the work what has been done. It's been moved and seconded. All those in favour of the recommendation, Chris Shaw?
It is a recorded vote, Chair. You were voting to retrospectively approve this application. So those voting in favour are councillor Driver, councillor Prinsley, councillor Sands, Mike, councillor Haynes, councillor Hickner, councillor Price, councillor Lovett, councillor Young.
All those against, Chris Shaw?
Those members voting against are councillors Peak and councillor Sue Sands. Is everyone?
No.
Sorry, councillor, I beg your pardon, sorry, difficult to be in here. Thank you.
Yeah, that's everybody's vote, so that's going to approve. Thank you very much. Okay. Well, we're quite good today. And it's at Six Ocean Crescent, there's a variation of opening hours. And Sophie, can you take us through on the poll, please?
Yeah, lovely. So the site in question is Six Ocean Crescent Norwich. This is a variation of condition application. So the premises in question underwent a change of use in 2020. That was all approved from a financial institution to a takeaway. What's currently there is the takeaway trading house, the lounge. Variation condition is regarding opening hours. Firstly, we must say that the proposal title has had a slight amendment. So if you refer to your document of the update, under item number seven, for clarity of description, the proposal should be amended to be variation of condition three. Opening hours of permission twenty double zero four nine seven slash F. So that's a slight amendment to what was on the initial specifications documents. I'd also refer you to the fact that there's a decision notice appended as appendix, item seven, on your update document, which shows the conditions of the original permission. The one that we are looking at today is condition three. So...
There's a pointer up top.
Oh, thank you, technology. So there's the location plan. Additive C, Ocean Crescent, there's a row of shops there running down there. We've got the main road, it's easy round about there. We have areas of parking. Within Ocean Crescent, number six is directly adjacent to Two Woodcock Road, as you can see on the plan there. That's a residential street. Six Ocean Crescent, as I said, it used to be a bank, it's now a takeaway. There are other takeaways along that road, which you'll be able to see better from this shot here. So dessert lounge is right there on the far left. We've got cab shops, takeaways along there, also with slightly late opening hours. The site in question, an existing takeaway, commercial unit. It's a very flat-roofed, brick-built, modern construction unit. To the north-east of the site is the residential street, Woodcock Road, consisting of twenty-something semi-detached properties, two-storey housing and bungalows. Two Woodcock Road is specifically relevant to this proposal. There's a small putting area for cars to the west, as I mentioned. That's accessible from Ocean Road. It's shared by businesses in the immediate vicinity. The site in question also lies in a critical drainage catchment area and the district retail centre because of this run of shops. And as I said before, it's had a change of use approved. What the applicant is requesting under this variation condition is that the opening hours are amended from existing to something a lot more extensive. So we've currently approved the use of the business between eight AM in the morning and no later than ten o'clock, Mondays to Sunday and bank holidays. That's to safeguard under DM two and DM eleven of the local plan to retain the character of the surrounding area and to prevent it from turning into a late-night kind of district. The proposed variation by the applicant is that they have asked for hours that are eight till half past midnight, Monday to Thursday and Sunday, and eight till one in the morning on Friday and Saturday. The proposal we're putting forward today is that there is an amendment that we would technically be happy to approve, but it's not the one that they have asked for specifically. So the hours after having advice from environmental protection and highways on this application is that they can extend the hours by one hour on a set of, on the... So under point two of the approval at the base, the opening hours will be restricted to eight AM until eleven PM on Monday to Saturday, and from eight AM until ten PM on Sundays and bank holidays. We're also adding air conditioning there, that no air conditioning units would be installed without prior consent, and that extra ventilation would be agreed within three months of the date of this consent. Some of the background as to why those conditions are being suggested and why we want those to be in place arises from the letters of representation we've received and the case assessment we have made us as a planning department. So if you look at paragraph nine of the representations, you can see that there have been multiple issues raised. We've had three letters of representation, we've received four, but two were from the same person. Therefore, we're classing it as three letters, not four. Four independent letters. The issues raised included, as tabled, burning, extensive litter, not well tended, controlled by the owner, smells, grease, a lack of ventilation, congestion from deliveries, pollution from commercial business, unsocial loitering of individuals outside the takeaway, wellbeing issues for neighbours, and the proximity of the takeaway to the residential housing being too close. Therefore, the main issues we're looking at here are amenity and transport. Upon advice from environmental protection, there have been enforcement issues around this premises already. Environmental protection have suggested that due to the issues with the extraction system and the noise from delivery drivers along with their proximity to a residential property, we would recommend they do not open later than eleven PM, Monday to Thursday, and ten PM on Sunday. The reasoning for that is that the row of shops itself has additional businesses which run to opening hours of a similar nature, and therefore environmental protection have extended this by one hour only to be in line with those other businesses, but to not extend to the post midnight and one AM opening hours that the applicant may have wanted. From a highway perspective, they have commented that the premises have an extent to consent for its business use. The unit is an established local centre. We've added good means of access to the highway network and once re-parcour provision. And therefore, it would be difficult to substantiate an objection from a highway perspective. So that's ultimately the reasoning from our point of view. Amenity is certainly the more significant of the two issues we're talking about here. As transport, and as I've just said, transport have commented that the parking is consistent with use. So in terms of amenity, we believe the proposal would encourage more trade on site seven days a week, and by implication, that would increase the cumulative impact of such trade, including noise traffic, refuse and litter. And that that would be exacerbated by extensive extension of opening hours. The opening hours we have proposed under condition would only increase one hour of trade in an entire week, rather than multiple hours of trade that would initially have been sought. We have looked at the immunity of the Two Woodcock Road and believe that the proximity of the neighbour is such that any extension in opening hours to that degree, post midnight, would increase the number of delivery vehicles collected from the premises, could legitimately cause additional pollutants close to occupants of neighbouring dwelling houses, and an increase in trade would likely produce more refuse, which would lead to greater potential for littering, which could affect wellbeing and encourage pest and burn. Therefore, that is why we are suggesting that the application to vary condition three is approved, but to the hours that we have suggested and in line with the other conditions regarding air conditioning units and ventilation.
Thank you very much for that.
Okay, so I'm going to read out a statement from Neighbour. So, dear planning committee, I'm currently unable to attend the meeting myself due to mobility issues and would like to make you aware of a couple of concerns we have if the dessert lounge is granted a later licence. Obviously, we're talking about planning application. License appears a few times. The building is immediately next to our home. When we purchased our home in 2018, the premises did not have a licence for a takeaway and was an A two licence. We are a single-storey bungalow, and the dessert lounge is just a few metres from our bedroom. We have a small alley between the two premises at the back, which is about a metre wide. This is owned by the dessert lounge, and we have had to secure the gate shut ourselves because after many requests, the proprietor had not fixed the catch, which meant the gate was banging all night. We have also had to report the issue of a vent being put into the back of the building directly over our property, emitting the smell of grease and fat every time a burger is cooked. This has recently been blocked up, but we are not convinced that come summer time, the issue will return. Our concerns are that, as we have already disturbed by noise at night and have to clear rubbish out of our front garden that is thrown over by customers, it will only increase. A takeaway just doesn't sit well so close to a residential dwelling, and we fear that if the later licence is awarded, even by an hour, it will only take a few months before another application is made. I wish the dessert lounge well, and I hope that they can succeed with the licensed hours that were authorised in 2020. I would also like the applicant to consider our wellbeing and how close to our home they are, and the impact that this business already has. Regards, Catherine Barron.
Thank you. Questions? I've got one. You said ahead that this place is supposed to be shut at ten. I understand it's been opened up till twelve, one o'clock. And is the portionation being taken now by City Hall?
The short answer is, well, this application is part of that action. It's... We've engaged with the owners and operators of this property for quite some time, both from an environmental protection point of view and a planning point of view, because they have breached the opening hours quite regularly. There have also been issues with the extraction system that has, or has not maybe been installed. And that has caused issues for the joint occupant, not just from this owner, sorry, from this operator, but also from previous operators. So it's been a kind of ongoing issue with the operators of this particular unit. When... But part of the reason that we haven't taken any formal action on the breach of condition is that on the advice of environmental protection, they don't have an objection to extending the opening hours to more than is actually allowed for under the existing consent. So we wanted to let this application run its course. The committee can make its decisions to whether or not you think the opening hours are acceptable. And then, if they breach those, we have a clear line as to what is and is not acceptable.
Okay, now, any questions from us? Councillor Close?
Thank you, Chair. So this is a bit of a strange one for me because I'm usually sitting on the other side of this at licensing. And so this is interesting. So just, so help me through this. So what we've got is mention of cumulative impact, but there is no licensing policy around cumulative impact. So the first question on that respect is, why would that be consideration of the planning committee? The second point, I guess, at this point is, we've had reference that the hours that are being applied for in the extension of licence, which is a licensing matter, as far as I can see, is acceptable to the licensing process, or there wouldn't be objections, if I've understood the officer, what the officer said, there wouldn't be objections from environmental health for an extension of hours. So what are we actually voting on here? We're voting on the extension of hours, but colleagues at the licensing do not have an objection to the extension of hours. So just if you could confirm what we're voting on. So there's a few little bits here. We've had references to rubbish and smell. Can somebody explain to me how having longer hours changes the impact of rubbish and smell, other than to say what is a problem already could be slightly worse because of extended hours? So mitigation could be, you know, no deliveries at certain times, adequate bins outside. I don't understand how additional hours or less hours affect the overall problem that is referenced. So I think that's enough for me from now. So the established cumulative impact point and whether or not that's relevant, you know, and effectively establish the relative impact of these additional hours. What are we actually voting here?
Yeah, so in terms of cumulative impact, I suppose I was summarising at that point the representations we've had received, which is that there is a suggestion that an increase in rubbish, waste, noise, is going to happen as a result of any increase in hours. So that's in terms of objections, representations raised. In terms of our assessment...
Could I just come back to the chair? So that reference to cumulative impact is nothing in terms of licensing reference of cumulative impact. That's a phrase that you're using to summarise...
Yeah.
...the overall area, because technically it kind of means something else.
Yeah, so sorry if that gone for me.
It carries more weight, I would say, in that phrase. So I don't think it's a great way to describe it personally.
In terms of licensing, we've had, if you refer to paragraph eleven, environmental protection have noted that if the premises were to open after eleven PM, they would require a later night refreshment, licence to operate after this time. Therefore, that is the logic behind the environmental protection recommendation because it's dated to eleven, and at the moment, it's currently ten. So that's the logic there.
Sorry, can I just butt in there on... There's a very distinct difference between the licensing and the planning consideration of this particular application. If something has a meaning in licensing, like in terms of the cumulative impact, you need to set that aside. It doesn't have the same meaning here. Because I understand that the licensing process does give kind of technical meanings to certain things. When you're looking at a planning application, it's... Probably characterising, you're kind of less restricted to the issues that you can look at than you can when you're considering a licensing application. So the issues about the cumulative impact of having a number... When you're, okay, just purely from a planning point of view, when you're looking at the cumulative impact of opening hours, yeah, it's perfectly legitimate to kind of take into account what the hours are in a particular area. And if you're bringing an application into line with the prevailing pattern of hours, then you can kind of make a judgement in terms of the wider immunity impact upon an area might not be significantly increased by doing that. And I think that's the nub of the comments from environmental protection. I think it's also important to make the point that environmental protection are commenting in their capacity as environmental protection, not the licensing authority. So they're making comments which they might not make in relation to a licence application. So they're looking at a wider definition of immunity through this planning application than they would through a licence application. And the reference, Sophie was alluding to, the reference to kind of increase... Any impact upon the wider definition of amenity, whether it's noise, disturbance, smells, litter, comes about by virtue of having people off using the premises for a longer period of time. It doesn't necessarily intensify those issues whilst the premises are in use. It simply extends them for a longer period of time. So from ten till midnight, in potentially in this case. So I appreciate where members are kind of sat on licensing committee and are sat on planning applications committee, the two issues can kind of become blurred. But effectively, you've got more rain, you've got more scope as part of the planning process. And also, the hours don't have to tie up. Licensing can grant more restricted hours, and we can grant more extended hours, and vice versa. They don't have to tie up. But, so, yeah, the language as big as this does not have the same technical meaning as it does to the licensing process.
I think the parity that saying cumulative impact in that context would be different words, like extend, cumulative impacts, whatever, you know.
Okay, there's no more questions, the officer? Amongst the recommendations, the recommendation is to approve with the condition restricted to the opening hours. I would second all of that. Thank you, councillor Mo Sands. Any discussion, anyone? Councillor Sands?
Anyone who wants to go and buy a dessert at one AM in the morning, I think has a serious problem. I think if someone's coming home from work and wanting to buy a meal, that's a different matter. But I'm glad, I'm saddened that the business owners feel that they need these extended hours to pass midnight and to one AM. I think that's completely unnecessary. I personally would like to see the hours retained as they are, but I can see the officer's logic and argument in what they presented. So certainly, I would support that. But if the applicant comes again in the future with any desire to further extend the hours, I will be firmly against that. But I'm quite content at the moment to approve the officer's recommendation.
Okay. I think we should be a bit careful here about people on night shifts and evening shifts and stuff, where they could just left work, they want to ask for it. Or whatever, have something to eat for breakfast. So we've got to be really careful about what we say about being regularised, that we would work from nine to five or something. Councillor Cover?
Thank you, Chair. I think the idea of being a light and sound is a very positive one for officers, so that we and the applicant know exactly where we stand. And so that ultimately can be taken if they then come to flowers. I think that's a late point to think. And I also want to declare interest, I have eaten dessert after midnight in the past.
I did last night, mate. No other discussion, votes in the poll, all who's in, finally, please show. All who's against?
Chair, I need to do a recorder for it, and the open hand is up, so sorry.
No, of course not.
Councillors Driver, Calvert, Hickner, Sands, Mike and Haynes, Price, Peak and Susan, and Prinsley, and Lubbock.
All who's against?
Councillor Young against.
No cases. Well, that's been passed as well. Thank you, Chair, and the committee. But can I just wish everyone a Merry Christmas, and we'll see you in the New Year. And that is to members and officers as well. Have the most enjoyable, yeah, enjoyable, that is. And enjoy yourselves, and we'll see you back in the first meeting.